Welcome to Zion Hill Bible for Life Wednesday Night Virtual Service. I am Minister Michael Martin and I'm standing in tonight for Dr. Aaron L. Parker. Let us now bow our heads and pray. Father God, we thank you for bringing us this far into the week. Lord God, we thank you, Father God, for protecting us. Lord God, for keeping us in this tumultuous season, Father God. This season of unsurety, Father God, we thank you for giving us assurance. We thank you, Father, for nudging us and reminding us, Father, that we should not fear anything, but we should rely on your power, your love, and that sound mind, Lord God. We thank you for this church called Zion Hill. We thank you for our pastor, Dr. Aaron L. Parker, and for his leadership during this stormy season. And Lord God, we ask you to continue to strengthen him. Father God, strengthen his family, protect them. Lord God, we thank you, Father, for this place that we can come to worship, Father God, though it may be virtual, that our hearts, mind, and spirit are still bound as one, because we know, Father God, that you reside in all of us, Father God. And when that is, we're all one. So we thank you, we praise you, in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Zion Hill, tonight, I'm so excited. I'm Michael Martin, and I'm here to stand in for Dr. Aaron L. Parker. Dr. Parker is traveling this week. He shall return on Sunday for the regular scheduled 9:30 a.m. service and also for the Bible of Life service next Wednesday night. I am a minister here who serves on the minister board, but most of all, I'm excited tonight because I serve on the health ministry also. And because of that, we are here tonight to talk about some of the things and update you on COVID-19. I'm excited because of the great panelists and profound panelists that we have tonight that serves here at Zion Hill on the health ministry. And as I mentioned tonight, that our topic is COVID-19 and update. And as usual, Bible for Life is a place where we sit down, we talk, we discuss, we pray about the Word of God. So tonight's scripture that we will begin with is Proverbs 16:16. "How much better to get wisdom than gold, to get insight rather than silver." The great thing about studying the Word of God and feeding on His Word, the power of studying that Word can be transformative. It can be cleansing. It can deepen our faith, feed us, nourish us, and build us. But tonight, we're going to go in a slightly different direction, but it's still in line with the Word of God and what God would want us to do. Tonight, we're going to go in a direction with God's grace, love, and mercy. We're going to listen to these panelists hopefully guiding us, giving us wisdom, giving us assurance and confidence in this season that has been besieged by the COVID-19 pandemic. And now I'll introduce our panel to you, panelists to you. We have Dr. Shelby Wilks. He's a graduate summa cum laude with a BS degree in biology from Alcorn State University. Received his doctorate of medicine degree from Johns Hopkins University School of Medicine. He is the Chair of Zion Hill Baptist Health Ministry. We have Dr. Jettie Barnett. Is an ophthalmic surgeon in Atlanta, Georgia area. She trained in medicine at the Johns Hopkins University School of Medicine and Harvard University. She also pursued theological education at the Interdominational Theological Center. We have Dr. Lejeune Oliver. Dr. Lejeune Oliver is a board-certified family medicine physician and obesity medicine specialist with the Southeast Permanente Medical Group. Dr. Oliver currently serves as physician director, clinician relations, and provides expertise on performance management, compliance, and employee-related matters for the entire medical group. We also have Dr. Kathy Ross Earls. Is presently the acting medical director for Obesity at Novo Nordisk Incorporated. She is a graduate of Howard University College of Medicine and subsequently received a master's in public health from the University of California, Los Angeles. Dr. Earls is a board certified in both pediatrics and obesity medicine. Zion Hill, tonight, as we move into this discussion, I'd like to remind you that you can submit your questions to the physician via Facebook chat, YouTube, or through the Zion Hill email at zhbc@zionhill.org. And now I'll introduce you to our first panelist, Dr. Wilks.
Thank you, Minister Martin. Good evening, Zion Hill family and the audience who's listening through other media. What is the objective of this, of these presentations this evening? We want you to get an understanding of the impact of COVID-19 in our personal and work lives. We also want you to understand the importance of testing and getting the vaccination, learn some general information about medical treatment, how the virus has spread, and the eligibility of the group from 12 to 17 years old, and finally, the importance of protecting yourself in the work environment. What is the current state of the pandemic in our country, the United States of America? In all of the 50 states, including Washington DC and two territories, including Puerto Rico and the US Virgin Islands, in February of 2020, there was 2,807 deaths related to the COVID virus. During the peak of this virus in May to June of 2021, there were over 680,000 deaths related to the COVID illness. There's a new aggressive variant called the Delta variant from India. It's very transmissible. And according to Dr. Fauci, who's the Director of the Center for Infectious Disease and Allergy at the National Institute of Health, he states that the data shows that this is 12 times more transmissible than the regular coronavirus. COVID-19 treatment, are vaccines available? Yes, they are available. Dr. Barnett will talk about that in her presentation. I will start to present some information about the treatment for patients who are hospitalized. Originally, this first medication called Remdesivir was used to treat hepatitis C and the respiratory syncytial virus. What is the mechanism of action of this particular medication? It blocks the duplication or replication of the virus. It is given intravenously. The common side effects include respiratory failure, organ impairment, decreased red blood cells, and a low platelet count associated with clotting issues. Now, the cost of this particular medication is variable depending on whether it's related to private insurance or government insurance such as Medicare. The other medication we want to deal with is called tosilizumab. How does it work? It decreases inflammation in cases of pneumonia. Its mechanism of action includes blocking interleukin-6, which causes inflammation. Its route of administration can either be intravenously with an IV drip over 60 minutes every four weeks, or it can be given in an injection once per week. The usual side effects are stomach pain, and it increases the risk, and it can increase the risk of fungal infection. We know that the cost of this particular medication is approximately $7,000. The last medication I want to talk about is dexamethasone. Dexamethasone is a steroid which has been associated with decreasing the mortality of patients who are severely ill from the COVID-19 virus. There was a study that was done in the United Kingdom where they looked at 2,104 patients. Dexamethasone decreased the number of deaths by 33% or 1/3 in patients who were on the mechanical ventilators. Those who were on oxygen alone had the number of deaths decreased by 1/5 or 20%. Its mechanism of action is that it decreases severe inflammation and is also associated with something called the cytokine storm, not to be discussed at this particular time. The route of administration can be orally with about 6 milligram daily, and this depend on whether one is on the mechanical ventilator or taking supplemental oxygen. What other side effect? It can decrease our immune system response. It is associated with weight gain, and it can increase your blood sugar or your glucose level, and the cost is variable. Now, there's been some discussion about another treatment that's available called the monoclonal antibody infusion. Is it available? Yes. What is this particular monoclonal antibody? The name of it is called sotrivimab. It's a recombinant human IgG, which is an antibody, monoclonal antibody that acts by binding to an epitope. I will define that briefly. Located on the spike protein receptor binding domain of the SARS-CoV-2 colony coronavirus. What is an epitope? An epitope is a segment of the antigen which allows the antibody to attach to the antigen and blocks the replication or duplication of the virus.
At this point, I'd like to talk about the importance of vaccinations. And our aim here is to give you some tools with which you can make the best decision for yourselves, your family, and your loved ones. We want to emphasize, however, that vaccinations are our route to freedom from the coronavirus. It's virtually the only way we will have this pandemic and the scourge that it brings to be away from our population. The vaccines are safe, they're effective, and they're readily available, including a site here at Zion Hill. The upper right photo shows a vaccination site and testing site, and the lower right shows a vaccination site along with testing. Thank you. And what's the role of vaccinations? Vaccinations will protect you from getting severe disease or from dying from the disease if you do get it. Most of the time, it protects you from the disease, but should you contract COVID, it will protect you from getting severe disease or dying from that disease. At the present time, since we have the resurgence of COVID due to the Delta variation that Dr. Wilks mentioned, 99.2% of the current deaths occur in people who have not been vaccinated. That means, again, it's not perfect. You have a 1% chance of still contracting a serious illness, but you have a 99% chance of not getting ill. Let me say that these data are taken from the Centers for Disease Control and from the Georgia Department of Public Health and from the Federal Drug Administration. So what's the data on COVID vaccination to date? In Georgia, 4.61 million have been vaccinated as opposed to the United States in which 332 have been vaccinated. The percentage vaccinated in Georgia is 36.7%, and that's low. It lags behind the national rate of vaccination, which is in itself low. Some states around the country have achieved a much higher level of vaccination and therefore safety from contracting COVID. All right, now how are vaccines administered? Again, just giving more information. The two types of vaccine are administered in either one dose or two doses. And in the case of both, of all three of them, immunity is fully developed two weeks after the last dose had been administered. Now, a concern of everyone is vaccine complications, of course, and it should be, so that you can make a balanced decision. And it differs for the various vaccines. Let's talk about the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine first. There have been reported events of thrombosis, a syndrome called TTC. Thrombosis meaning blood clots, and thrombocytopenia, which means blood doesn't have enough platelets. And so that was discovered in April in some people who took the COVID vaccine, the Johnson &amp; Johnson brand. And there were about 15 cases in 7 million doses administered at that particular time. So it gives you an idea of how rare these complications are. From April the 12th to April the 23rd, the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine was paused so that scientists could discover if this was going to be a larger threat and it needed to be taken off the market, or if indeed it was safety, the safety profile outweighed the potential complications. And it turns out that that is the case, and there has not been a great increase or surge in these illnesses. And then just recently, there has been diagnosed a rare syndrome of Guillain-Barre named for two French scientists who were instrumental in discovering it, in which there's numbness or tingling of the hands and feet that develops about two weeks after the vaccine. And it can lead to a progression of nerve fiber damage. It can even lead to death, about a 6% rate of death. Unfortunately, this happens in younger people, typically young men. And then this was studied as well, and it was found that still the benefits greatly outweighed the potential complications of getting the vaccine. Now, on the Pfizer-Maderna vaccines are called mRNA vaccines because of the technology that they use, and I'll go into that in a little bit more later. And they are administered in two doses, usually about 21 days apart or so, a maximum of that. And there has been a cardiomyopathy or myocarditis, which is inflammation of the heart muscle and the surrounding sac in the heart. Now, this has been rare as well, and it occurs at the rate of 1,177 million. So these complications are vanishingly small, and I want you to realize that because if we think about it in just usual terms of how we think about things, or layman's terms, your chances of getting struck by lightning in over the next, over your lifetime are 1 in 15,000. And here, we're talking, and we never think about getting struck with lightning, unless it's raining, of course, and then we take cover. But if we have something like the virus where the incidence is usually about 1 in the millions, that gives you an excellent safety profile, in my opinion, and in scientific opinion. Okay. So what are some other concerns about vaccines other than about the potential complications? The Johnson &amp; Johnson technology, again, is a non mRNA, and it does not use a live virus. The mRNA vaccines do not use a live virus or killed virus particles. The Johnson &amp; Johnson, it's called a vector virus, and it uses a live virus, which is an adenovirus like the cold virus. So it uses the cold virus to introduce a little protein that is the way that the cells of the virus enter your body, the virus particles enter your body. They can't attach to your cells unless these receptor proteins are present. And I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide, which I'll bring up. I do want to talk about certain myths that come up about the vaccines. Can the new technologies give me COVID-19? The answer to that is a firm no, because COVID-19 is never introduced into your body. This came about because in the old days, vaccines were administered by giving you an attenuated or weakened form of the organism, such as smallpox, for example. And that set up an immunity so that when you were exposed to someone with smallpox, you would already recognize it when it came in and you could fight it. Well, this is a refinement of that, which I'll talk about in a minute. And incidentally, vaccination didn't start with Western scientists, as is sometimes said. It was done in Africa and India and China in order to confer immunity in certain infectious diseases. Then, can these technologies change my DNA? It doesn't touch your DNA, it's not designed to do that, and it doesn't do that. Then, one that I learned in the course of doing this research is about the idea that it could make you magnetic. And the answer to that is also a firm no. All right. Well, you heard me mention the structure of the virus and the protein particles. When you see COVID, it's not just a pretty representation that they make. It's because the virus particles here depicted in gray, like the ball, are in the center, and the protein or receptors are the red receptors that you see. So if you can confer immunity and make the body recognize those proteins so that they are inactivated and disabled, the body never can get COVID because the virus cannot enter your cells. And that's a very important point. We don't have to inject the virus itself because there is a way using this new mRNA technology that the virus is injected and we are sensitized against the COVID proteins so that it can't handshake with the proteins in your cells and fool them and enter the cells. All right. So vaccinations, again, I mentioned, we know about them. Most of us have had vaccinations, smallpox, polio. Anyone who's attended college has had in all probability a meningitis vaccine. The diphtheria, pertussis, all of these are vaccines that give us a greater lifestyle and a longer life. This vaccine, these vaccines against COVID were developed fast because a lot of scientists bent their own careers to do this. were developed fast because a lot of scientists bent their own careers to do this and stopped doing other things because of its great threat. As Dr. Wilk said, six, over 600,000 people having succumbed to the disease. So with all that, I'd like to just say that the, I've gone a little further than I need to, that vaccinations, once again, are our collective ticket to return to the normal activities that we like without being worried that we will make ourselves, our families, or our loved ones ill. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Burnett, for that valuable information about vaccines. And good evening, Zion Hill family and friends. We've talked a little bit about the impact of COVID-19, and not just the past impact of COVID-19, but the ongoing impact. Dr. Wilk shared a little bit about the treatment options as it relates to COVID-19. But because those treatment options are very limited, prevention is key, and that is what's so important for us. Vaccination is also an important part of prevention for us in spreading COVID-19, but also preventing us from getting the illness itself. The CDC has recommended a number of guidelines for those that are vaccinated and unvaccinated so that we can begin to resume many of our routine and normal activities. On the website for the CDC, there is a listing of those safer activities. As you can see on the graphic that's listed, to the right, there is a description of activities that individuals can take part in. And they're listed in things in terms of being safest and those that are less safe. So you will see on the far side, there's a column for those that are fully vaccinated. And if you're able to see the miniature icon there, you will see that that individual or the icon does not have a mask on. And so there's a list of many activities that are listed in green that you are able to do safely without wearing a mask if you're vaccinated. In the middle of the screen, you will also see a graphic, also two, of an icon. But you will see red for those items and activities that still are not relatively safe for those who are unvaccinated. Yellow, moderately safe, and green are things that are safe. So these might include, for those that are in green, activities such as being outside, having a small outdoor gathering with individuals who are vaccinated. And so for those who are unvaccinated or vaccinated, being able to participate in those activities without a mask is something that's pretty safe to do. However, if you are engaged in activities such as indoor dining, being involved in an indoor sporting event, or things of that nature, then those things are listed as relatively unsafe for those who are not vaccinated. And we do strongly recommend that you continue to wear your mask. Whereas, again, for those activities, even those that are listed in the red for the unvaccinated, you still have an opportunity, or it's still recommended that individuals who are vaccinated still may be able to participate in those activities without a mask. It's very important, though, for us to remember that the CDC says and recommends that we still consider our own personal risk as well as the risks of the community before we decide to venture out without a mask. Our guiding principles for those that are fully vaccinated. So really, indoor and outdoor activities pose minimal risk for those that are fully vaccinated. For those that are also vaccinated, we know that there's a reduced risk of transmitting or spreading COVID virus. Now, even though there's a reduced risk of transmitting and getting the virus, it still does not mean that you may not contract the virus if you're fully vaccinated. Most often times, though, that if you were to contract the virus and you're vaccinated, it will be with mild, very mild symptoms. However, it is very important that if you are vaccinated, you begin to experience symptoms, that you get testing, if you test positive for those, and that you stay away from others for the fully 10 days. And then also too, as vaccinated individuals, that we do want to follow the local guidance of what's happening in the community as well as regulations by our state officials. If you're fully vaccinated, what things can you continue to do? Well, you want to still make sure, again, that you're following the guidance at your workplace, local businesses and venues, because many of them will still have masking requirements. In addition, if you have medical conditions or taking medications that may weaken your immune system, you still may want to talk to your healthcare provider before you venture out without your mask because even though you're vaccinated, you still may need to take additional precautions. And again, if you have been around others with COVID-19 or if you're developing any symptoms, it's still very important that you get tested and you stay away from others until we confirm that you do not have active COVID-19 disease. Now, many that are fully vaccinated are excited about being able to travel a little bit more. But there are still some guidelines as it relates to travel recommendations. So some of those include making sure that you're wearing your mask whenever you're on public transportation, whether or not there's airplanes, buses, trains, any type of public transportation. You still, it's still recommended that you continue to wear your mask even while you're being, even though you're fully vaccinated. In addition to that, it is not, or no longer recommended that you actually have to have a COVID-19 viral test before or after domestic travel. So again, that's domestic travel within the United States. You do not have to have a COVID vax, COVID test prior to travel. Once you do travel, whether or not it's domestic or international, it's not recommended that you quarantine when you get back. However, it is strictly important, particularly when you engage in international travel, that you are aware of those local guidelines as it relates to the additional countries, that you consider the risk of the places that you're traveling, and also pay attention to the guidance as it relates to viral testing. So while the CDC does provide guidance for those that are fully vaccinated and those that are unvaccinated, there's also a special briefing that the CDC recommends for large gatherings. So I know that we've seen many events on television where there are large groups of people that are gathered together. But the CDC does have specific guidelines as it relates to larger gatherings. And some of those, as you mentioned, and so a large gathering is when you are coming together with multiple individuals from different households. So again, it's very important to consider the risk of the number of COVID-19 cases that exist within the community. Again, is this an indoor event or an outdoor setting? Because we know that outdoor settings for both vaccinated and unvaccinated tend to generally be safe. And then, for larger gatherings, particularly many of those venues are still needing to promote healthy behaviors to prevent spread. So in those cases, you may still continue to need to wear your mask. You may still need to monitor for physical distancing. You also want to make sure that those venues are following through on those prescribed guidelines as it relates to disinfecting the areas. And certainly, we want to continue to be cautious of using our hand hygiene, washing our hands, using hand sanitizer. And certainly, if you should be coughing, making sure you have those respiratory etiquettes such as stepping away if you needed to cough or coughing in your sleeves. Other considerations as it relates to COVID-19 vaccination. So again, we can't stress enough that vaccination is a critical preventive measure to help us end this pandemic. All of the COVID-19 vaccines, as Dr. Burnett shared with us today, that are authorized in the United States are very effective against COVID-19. And they're effective, again, against preventing serious illness, hospitalization, and death. However, it is important to realize that the risk of COVID-19 infection in fully vaccinated people cannot be fully eliminated because there continues to be community transmission of the virus, which, again, really stresses the point why prevention and vaccination is so important. And those individuals who have compromised immune systems should make sure that they're discussing with their primary care provider, their healthcare provider, whether or not they need to continue to use personal protective measures in spite of vaccination. Again, we've talked about the importance for those that have immunocompromised conditions to make sure that they check with their primary care provider. But also, there may be some fully vaccinated people who don't have immunocompromised conditions, who may want to continue with those personal protective measures, such as wearing their mask just for personal comfort or to reduce their risk. But again, vaccination is key to helping to eliminate and to prevent spread of this virus. There is still ongoing studies as it relates to the variants. However, again, as Dr. Burnett mentioned, there is growing evidence that our current vaccines that are authorized here in the United States still are effective against all of the emerging variants that we are aware of at this time. Thank you, Dr. Oliver, for stressing the importance of prevention through vaccinations. Finally, let's talk about the importance of testing. Health equity is when all members of the society enjoy a fair and just opportunity to be as healthy as possible. The COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted the unfortunate fact that health equity is still not a reality as COVID-19 has disproportionately affected many racial and ethnic minority groups. Such health inequities put communities of color more at risk of getting sick and dying from COVID-19. This imbalance affects a wide range of health risks and outcomes. COVID-19 is just one of those health risks. While African Americans comprise about 12% of the US population, we represent almost half of all COVID-19 hospitalizations. Likewise, we account for approximately 34% of all COVID-19 deaths. Remember, we represent only 12% of the US population. We are disproportionately infected by COVID-19, and we are disproportionately hospitalized with poor outcomes because of this deadly virus. However, we can curb such conditions through not only mask-wearing, hand washing, and social distancing, but also through frequent testing. We should all be tested when we come in contact with someone who is positive for COVID-19. And remember, most people who transmit COVID-19 do not have any symptoms. Therefore, it's important to remain vigilant with appropriate testing. And at Zion Hill, we have made it tremendously easy for you to do just that. You don't even have to exit your car. Not only should adults be tested, but children should also be tested utilizing these four simple rules. Number one, all children with symptoms of COVID-19 should be tested immediately. Number two, all children should be tested before undergoing any medical or surgical procedure. Number three, any child who does not have symptoms but has come in contact with someone who is COVID-19 positive should wait about three to four days before getting tested. And number four, testing for children is not recommended for indirect exposure. An example of indirect exposure is if you're shopping with your child in Publix and you are in the produce aisle on aisle number one, and there is a report that there is a COVID-positive person who has entered the store and gone immediately to the meat aisle on aisle number 20, testing is not usually necessary. While those four steps cover many of the testing rules for children, there are, however, some nuances to pay attention to. There are no universal guidelines for testing in schools and sporting events, and each hospital has their own set of guidelines for testing newborns and hospitalized children. And while testing does not differ depending upon the age of the child, some symptoms are more characteristic in older children. For example, older children, including adolescents and young adults, are more likely to have symptoms suggestive of an upper respiratory illness and loss of taste and smell. It is expected that our children will all return to in-person learning in the fall of 2021. Therefore, promoting testing and vaccination can protect our children as they return not only to in-person learning, but to sporting and extracurricular events. And let's all remember, mask-wearing appropriately placed above the nose and covering the mouth should be worn by all children over the age of two who are not fully vaccinated. The latest CDC recommendations also remind us that children should maintain a distance of three feet from each other while in the classroom. And when such conditions cannot be maintained, additional measures of sanitation, including hand washing, mask-wearing, appropriate ventilation, and keeping your child at home when they are sick, are all important measures that will assist in curbing the spread of the disease. So let's remember, it's up to all of us to practice current CDC guidelines in order to prevent the spread of COVID-19 in our communities and in our schools. Children 12 and older are eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccination. And as always, quick and frequent testing will assist greatly in preventing the spread of the disease and potentially save a life. And that life that you save may be that of a stranger, a family member, or perhaps even a member of Zion Hill Baptist Church as we hopefully return on August 8th to in-person service.
Zion Hill Baptist Church. I hope you enjoyed yourself tonight. I hope that you received the information that was put together by this panelist to hopefully help you to be at ease and at rest. We have a couple of questions for the panelists. The first question is, could you elaborate about the Delta variant, how it's transmitted, and what are the symptoms? Are they the same as the standard COVID virus?
Let me say something about that. I mentioned that in my presentation. The Delta virus has been identified in India and is also present in the, in the US at the present time. It is thought to be the most common cause of new infections in that age group between, who has, who have not been vaccinated. So the symptoms of shortness of breath, you may have a fever, you may have a cough. All of those are present. And it's And it's highly, highly contagious, contagious according to Dr. Anthony Fauci, who is the director of the Allergy and Infectious Disease Division at the National Institute of Health. But the good thing is that the current vaccine in most cases will curb the severity and the complication of the Delta variant.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wilkes. Second question, as we know, the president has been pushing for more Americans to be vaccinated. But still, there are some states that are still outstanding as far as the low vaccination rates, such as our state of Georgia. When it comes to that low vaccination rate, what kind of adverse effect or even challenges can that have for those who may be vaccinated and unvaccinated?
We touched upon that a little bit. The vaccinations are not without some level of risk. However, that level of risk is much, much lower when compared to the risk of contracting COVID because most of the complications are not fatal with the vaccination, but COVID can be and to a very large degree. Some of the other panel might want to address this, but I'd like to say one more thing about the Delta variant. The Delta variant has, and other variants will have a chance to grow as long as the virus circulates in the community among unvaccinated individuals. If we can get a handle on the virus by getting most people vaccinated, it has fewer opportunities to circulate and learn how to infect us better, basically. So that's the reason we all need to get vaccinated. And as I said in my presentation, we have issues with complications of the vaccine. And we can answer questions a little later too via our Health Ministry update. But the complications of not taking it are far greater.
Let me quickly also, and thank you, Dr. Burnett, for your response to the question. One of the reasons why it's so important to get more vaccination in the community because we want to develop herd immunity. Herd immunity is thought to occur when about 70% of the potential population has been vaccinated. It's, we are not there yet, but the more persons who are vaccinated, they are less likely, as Dr. Burnett just stated, to have a severe course with the coronavirus or the COVID-19 illness. So it's very critical that you get vaccinated because without being vaccinated, your risk of dying is much, much higher, starting with the Delta variant. In some states, most of the admissions now are in-person, less than 30 years old.
And the final question, with school quickly, you know, opening, I would say, what, in the next three weeks to four weeks for some counties? And Georgia lifting the mandate of students not having to wear their mask, what kind of advice or insight would you be able to give to parents at large as what to do, how to do it, et cetera, et cetera?
I just want to make sure that I have the question correct. Are you speaking of children younger than 12 who do not have the opportunity to become vaccinated at the appropriate, right now?
Uh, children, children under 12, children over 12, those who are not vaccinated or who are not vaccinated at all.
It is highly recommended now that children actually 12 and over receive the vaccination. Let me repeat that. It is highly recommended that children 12 and over receive the vaccination. For those less than age 12, mask-wearing, and as I said before, maintaining social distancing, hand washing, sanitizing is, will help in decreasing the spread of the disease. But 12 and over, vaccinations are highly recommended.
Thank you. Would anyone like to add anything else to that?
And so we know that even though there are state regulations, each school district may actually have their individual recommendations and mandates for the students within that district. So as a result of that, that even though statewide, there may not be a masking requirement, local school districts may begin to impose those guidelines as it relates to masking. But I think it's critically important, again, as already been stated, for those that are eligible to get the vaccine, for our children and teen, that teens that are eligible, that they do go ahead and get the vaccine. And then for our younger ones, making sure that we create a safeguard around them so that those in the household, those other family members who are very close to them, also make sure that they get the vaccine so that those, again, will lessen the opportunity for them to be able to contract the virus because again, their community and small circle are vaccinated. And then finally too, regardless of the recommendations for, for our schools that are put, that may come forward, then our, as parents and grandparents and guardians, that we also still have a responsibility to protect our children. And so again, it may be an individual decision to continue those preventive measures that you know may safeguard your child. And again, encouraging them to use appropriate hand hygiene, appropriate respiratory etiquette as well may help.
Thank you so much. I'd love to just thank the panelists for that information. And also just to let you know that as we sit here in, and I myself stand here in this sanctuary, that all our panelists are vaccinated. You'll notice that two of our panelists are sitting side by side, Dr. Wilkes and Dr. Burnett. That's because they're happily married for many years now. So they're both vaccinated and they share the same household. So I would implore on all of you to practice some of those things. Make sure that people that you're living with or staying with are vaccinated, vaccinated. As we've heard, it's important that we get vaccinated because it helps the virus not to jump from person to person. And just to give you a little more insight, which I didn't earlier, I do work in the healthcare field myself as an emergency room technician. And we are seeing cases of people who are vaccinated that are still contracting the COVID virus. Keep in mind that, you know, there's a 5% chance for the Moderna and for the Pfizer that you may still get infected. It's higher on the Johnson &amp; Johnson. So therefore, you should still practice those mitigations such as hand washing, practicing social distancing, and again, making sure that individuals that you're sharing space with without your mask are vaccinated. And with that said, we'd like to share some more information with you as far as Zion Hill Baptist Church and some of the services that we have available during this COVID, continued COVID season that Dr. Parker and the administrative staff here has been feverishly and just working hard to make sure that our community, not only our congregation, but our community is served well. Remember, Zion Hill is that place where we love to serve our community. The COVID vac, 19 vaccine, first and second dose will be given Thursday, July 15th from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM. Second dose for those who receive the first dose at Zion Hill on Thursday, July 1st. Watch for communication for additional information. You can check the website, you can check your email, you can call into the church office. There is a plethora of ways to gather information to make your decision as to when and where at Zion Hill you will take the vaccine. Two vaccine option offered, Pfizer, two dose required, age 12 and up. Johnson &amp; Johnson, one dose required, age 18 and up. Registration in advance at Fulton County, That's Fulton, V A X, chorus, I'm sorry, my, my, I'm sorry about that. Core response, that's C O R E, R E P O N S E dot O R G. Or scan the QR code and that will give you all the required information. Second, United Way COVID-19 testing program. So for those who want to get tested, we have a partnership with the United Way. COVID-19 testing will be offered on our campus at Zion Hill Baptist Church. Monday, August 2nd from 10:00 AM through 2:00 PM. And Thursday, August 5th from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM for those who may have to come after work. So again, we're giving you that opportunity, whether it's in the day or after work in order to make sure that your health is put first. To pre-register via phone, please call 404-844-4277. Monday through Thursday. Again, that's 404-844-4277. Again, Monday through Thursday, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And Sundays, 12:00 PM until 4:00 PM. We'd like to thank you for coming out tonight, for joining us in this virtual session for our Bible for Life service. We hope this information again will help you to make the right decision to not only help yourself, your household, your community, and the nation at large. This is something that we'd like to get behind us and move forward. Now, we would like to close with a prayer. Please bow your heads and close your eyes. Lord God, we thank you today, Lord. We thank you, Father God, for the information that you have shared through our panelists today, Father. We thank you for the words, Father God, not only of wisdom, but of science, Father. Because we're in a season where science dictates, Father God. And Lord God, we know that you have empowered our doctors and our scientists with the information in order for us, Father God, to be safe, to protect our health, to protect each other, Lord God. Lord God, we ask you tonight, Father, to touch those, Father, who may be struggling tonight, Father, with emotional and mental issues, Father God, because of this COVID-19, because of the isolation. Father God, touch them from the crown of their head to the soul of their feet, Father. Remind them, Father, to be still and remember who you are, Lord God. Remind them that you have not forsaken them, Father God, that your eternal messenger, eternal words that were spoken to Joshua on the banks of the Jordan River, that I will not forsake you or leave you, that I will be with you until the end of all times, still resonate in this time, in this period, in this space, Father God, despite, despite what we may be challenged with or faced with, Father God. Touch each and every one, Father God, comfort them, Father God. Provide for those, Father God, who needs provision. Lord God, we know that COVID has caused some of us not to have food, not to have homes, Father God, just Father God, not to have. But we know, Father God, that you are a God of provision, that you have seen, Father God, from the stars, from the heavens, what your children need, Lord God. And you, Lord God, shall provide for them. So we ask you today to provide. Lord God, we ask you to touch and heal those who need healing today, Lord God. Touch their bodies, touch each and every organ, each and every blood vessel, Father God. And Lord God, if it's COVID-related, Father God, we ask you to drive this dreadful enemy, Father God, to the ends of the universe, Father, that it will not have dominium over anyone's body anymore, Lord. Lord, we just thank you. We ask you, Father God, as we leave this place, as each panelist, each person who have committed themselves here in this temple tonight, leave to travel on the roads, Father God, that you protect them, you guide them, and you keep them, Lord God. Father God, touch our pastor as he's not here today, Lord God. Continue to surround him, continue to provide the words, Father God, and most of all, the strength, Father God, that he will continue to lead us, Father, in this season. We come to you, asking and praying, amen.